Yes, I have another report. It's not a board committee, but last month, the New Jersey School Board Association met for their semi-annual delegate assembly. It was attended by over 150 Board of Education members throughout the state. And I just need to read a brief objective report summary of delegate action taken by the Assembly. The adopted resolutions are incorporated into the NJSPA manual of official policy and position statements. So these resolutions, they're not binding, but they just give the NJSPA direction when lobbying the legislature or state departments. The first originated in Highland Park, Middlesex County. The resolution sought additional language that New Jersey should continue to provide multiple pathways to a high school diploma that include alternatives not based on standardized tests. This was approved. The NJSPA believes that the state should provide alternate -- oh, sorry. Alternate methods of achieving state and federal requirements for graduation that are not based merely on standardized tests. Some examples include the alternate high school assessment or portfolio assessments. The next resolution was from Neptune in Monmouth County. The resolution sought additional language moving the compulsory education age from 16 to 18. This was also approved. The NJSPA believes that local school boards should be permitted by statutory authority to mandate a mandatory education age beyond the age of 16. Next, from Wayne Township in Passaic County, there was a resolution that sought additional language that states any unfunded or underfunded curriculum programs mandated for all students should be excluded from the state budgetary caps. And this was actually defeated due to the unintended consequences that taxpayers may face. Next, from the Glassboro School District, the resolution proposed that the NJSPA should urge the legislature to amend the Inter-District Public School Choice Program Act to remove the prohibition of a school district from maintaining a tuition and a choice program at the same time. This was approved. The NJSPA believes that the state should permit local districts to accept tuition students while simultaneously participating in the Inter-District Public School Choice Program, provided that all locally designated choice seats have already been filled through a neutral selection process. Next, number five, in South Plainfield, from Middlesex County, the resolution requested the New Jersey School Board Association to lobby the New Jersey federal legislators to amend the Affordable Care Act and eliminate the imposition of the Cadillac tax on public entities, including school districts. This was approved. The NJSPA believes that local school districts should not bear the financial burden of the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act, and that boards of education should be given the legal authority to mitigate the potential consequences of the act caused by surcharges by shifting to alternate benefit programs. The last resolution was also from South Plainfield, Middlesex County. The resolution requested the NJSPA to lobby New Jersey state legislators to reach a legislative solution to fully fund the state pension fund as soon as possible, without requiring any additional cost to become the financial responsibility of local boards, districts, or employees. This was approved overwhelmingly. The NJSPA believes it should not oppose any measure to transfer -- it should oppose any measure to transfer the obligation to fund the pension system from the state to local districts. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Do you want to know when the next meeting is? Jeff?
November.
November?
Not till November.
Okay.
And I'll be representing Old Bridge again.
All right, thank you. All right, on this side, committee reports, anyone? No? All righty. As far as personnel is concerned, we'll do something in August, so we're ready for September. So we'll give the board an update at that time. Thank you. Moving on, we are now -- okay. It is time for our hearing of the residents. So this is on agenda items only. If there's anybody in the audience that has any questions, discussions, comments. Mr. Borcelly.
Kevin Borcelly. Originally, I wasn't going to speak until later on in the meeting because it wasn't originally an agenda item, but it was brought up in the superintendent's report, as well as mentioned by the board president, so I figured I would bring it up now. You did mention, Mr. Siderino, that the resource program will remain at Grissom School. All right, we're very grateful for that. Of course, some PTA members are here, there's some parents here. Thank you very much for that. Mrs. Andriani, you had mentioned that it becomes very personal, and to some degree, yes, it does. But we were never voicing our concerns just for the personal reasons. In the emails, and I've seen many of the replies of the emails that have come from many of the board members and so on, and it seems that it becomes an issue between the Grissom parents and the Board of Education. And that's not what it is. The PTAs in this town typically stick together, and they work together to make sure that we provide the best education for all of our students. And that's one thing why I've been a very active PTA member for so long, and I continue to fight along with the PTA, and I will continue to do so. There are other schools as well that are facing this concern, and I'm not going to mention the schools tonight publicly because their PTA presidents were unable to attend tonight, and I don't want to be discussing other schools without them here. However, there are other schools that are facing the same concerns, that there are not going to be resource teacher available. We believe that there should be a resource teacher available in every school. And just read one line of one of the emails that came from one of the board members as a reply. It ends with, "I assure you, it is our priority to make sure every student in our district have the services they need." And I know that every single board member up there has stated that at some point, right, that they're always here for every single student. So we want to make sure that every student receives the resources they need without having to be pulled out of their home school and moved to another location to be provided those services. So we implore you, the board members, to let the administration know that you want to fight for every student in this district, and you want to make sure that every student in this district has the resources they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borcelly. Sure. Okay. I'm sorry. We have technical difficulty. Mr. O'Neil?
Hi. A few things I wanted to address today, but first, I'd like to talk about this meeting in general. When I first heard that instead of having an agenda meeting, a regular meeting, and a cleanup meeting this June, there were only going to be two, I thought, that's great. I only have to go to two meetings instead of three. But after seeing the significance of the recognition and the items that are being voted on tonight, it's my opinion that the community would be better served if the regular meeting did happen during the school year, so that both the recognition and the items got the attention that they deserve. It's something that I'm just realizing now, you know, looking back, being at the meeting, that I think that it would be the best thing. Just my opinion. I would like to commend the coaches who are recognized tonight, and extend the recognition to their assistant coaches and all of the coaches in the Old Bridge athletic program this year. We had one of our best years overall that we've ever had, and I just want to give a tip of the hat to all of them, those who were recognized tonight and those who weren't. And I do have a few questions for the board. I see that we are renewing our contract with Brown &amp; Brown, the health insurance broker, as you know very well, and I won't go into it at length again, but I believe that the board got some bad advice from some venue that led to losses on the district's end and the employees' end regarding health benefits. I wanted to know if they were being renewed because you found they were not at fault, or if they were the best option, or the cheapest option. I don't know if anyone would like to respond and explain that, or comment on Brown &amp; Brown, or the renewal?
Every five or six years, it's mandatory that the district go do an RFP, Request for Proposal, for professional services. In the RFP, which was published online, there was a scale that was used to evaluate any submissions that were made. The district received two submissions, one from Brown &amp; Brown and one from Arthur J. Gallagher, and we evaluate them on the basis of their technical criteria, their management criteria, and their cost-fee criteria. And in this particular case, Brown &amp; Brown's point score was the highest of the two.
I did see there are only two bids, which doesn't give you many choices. I also saw Mr. Siderino's contract is on the agenda, and I would congratulate him, but I'll wait until after the vote. I'm personally glad that Mr. Siderino is getting the contract that he's getting. I look forward to working with him over the next five years. However, there's a chart, it's a little complicated. I was hoping that somebody could explain some of the terminology on the chart, and what exactly some of those terms meant to us, either now or when you get to it, when That's all for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. We'll --
Is that it from public?
We happen to know Mr. Borcelly and Mr. O'Neil. Thank you.
I'm Teresa Burns from Lawrence Harbor, and I just had some questions about the survey that was given to the elementary students. It's okay. So I was just wondering if it was specific grades or all of the grades?
At the elementary level, it was given to the fourth and fifth grade students. We wanted to be sure they could understand the questions to answer to them.
Okay. And was it done electronically or on paper?
Electronically.
Was it open-ended questions, or I'm going to assume --
Most of them are multiple choice.
Okay.
Likert scale type of --
I'm sorry?
A Likert scale type of question.
Okay. I don't know what that means, but I'll have to look it up. My last question is, how were students with special needs then accommodated for the survey?
Depends upon the schools. Some of the schools, there was a random sample done, and some of the schools, they did it as part of their technology course. So if they were in the technology course, taking technology during the month of June, then they would have taken it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That was your survey? Just as a note, that survey was created and disseminated through the student body for increased communication, so the students had a voice. So that's what the purpose was for that. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else? Okay. Okay. Are you taking this now, or this are?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bisani. I'm a mother of two beautiful children sitting right over there that attend Grissom Elementary. My son, Leith Bisani, will be entering third grade in September, and I have my daughter, Jude Bisani, who just graduated kindergarten, and right before her graduation ceremony, I was told she would have to repeat kindergarten because a resource teacher would not be available for her in first grade. So she'd either have to struggle in first grade or repeat kindergarten. It was difficult to tell her because initially, when her reaction was that she was not going to be able to be in the same class as her friends, and she just couldn't really understand it. We've had a few meetings throughout the school year with her IEP case manager and her teachers. She's shown very good -- hello? Is that -- okay. She's shown great academic progress. She works better in smaller groups, but I've known that she can excel in first grade if she did have a resource teacher. Just happy to learn today that a resource teacher will be available at Grissom, and I hope that the other schools as well have the same opportunity. I came in today, not just for my daughter, but even for other students in the future that may struggle throughout their academic years if they didn't have a resource teacher or the help needed, to come here and support them. So I'm really happy for everyone that was involved to make that decision and have a resource teacher available for this coming year. Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing that with us. I just want to -- you can just close the microphone?
Okay.
I just want to make a correction to something that was stated, that every school, every elementary school will have a resource teacher. There is not one elementary school that doesn't have a resource teacher, at least one or more at every school. Thank you. Just to -- hi, Mr. Jawark?
Yes.
I'm inviting Mr. Jawark to come up to speak because he spoke to us once before at a policy meeting. Just as a reminder to the board, it was a question about early entrance age for a child entering kindergarten or first grade, a policy issue. I'll let you speak, but I'll give you an update prior to you speaking. So answer any questions that you do have.
So hi, Roman Jawark. I'm here with my wife, Eva. Like Mr. Siderino said, we addressed the board in May about our daughter's situation, and I'm sure there are many other kids' families with the same situations, where our daughter is only two weeks after the cut-off day to enter the first grade, or kindergarten, rather. So we would like to know whether or not the board made any decisions if you will address these type of, you know, problems.
So after your meeting, Mr. Parton, who attended the meeting, our attorney for the board, presented me with some options that are present at other school districts, and I said that at least one of the options would fit the needs of Old Bridge. It would have to then go to a policy meeting for them to review it and have two public readings before a policy is changed. That is the law. We just can't say today we want to change the policy. So at the next policy meeting, that will be because of you bring it to our attention. We will be looking at that policy and looking to amend it to some new language in there. Does that help you in September? I can't say that it does, and I'm being an all-honest with you. I'm glad that you're here. If we have the meeting tomorrow in June, we would still have to have two readings at a public meeting in August and September. So that's where we would be. That's earliest it could be adopted is at the September meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, again, your patience and your professionalism. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Moving on to board action items, we're moving into policy, which are just first readings. All right. Curriculum professional development, there are 17 resolutions on here. I need a -- there's no action. Yeah, there's no action. Okay, so I need a motion for curriculum.
Dineoff will move curriculum professional development, items one through 17.
Thank you.
Hotman will second.
Mr. Dineoff, thank you, Ms. Hotman. Any discussion, questions? Okay, Mr. Mara.
Hotman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 17 pass.
Thank you. Athletics, number one up to from A through double D. I could count those, but I need a motion.
Dunn will move athletics, item one.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you, Ms. Hotman. Any questions? No? Mr. Mara?
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Finance, one through 28, I think. One through 28.
Dunn will move finance, items one through 28.
Dineoff will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Dineoff. Questions, comments, discussion? Nancy? Ms. Mongan? Kelly?
Well, I was just going to ask if 10 can be separated for voting purposes?
Number 10?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ellis Foster would like that just separated for her for voting purposes. Mr. Mara? That's the honeywell, number 10. Okay. Ms. Mongan?
Yes, I just wanted to have discussion on 11, 12, and 13. Two months ago, when we had our public hearing on the budget on April 28th, I asked the board to consider cutting the tax levy by $755,000 so that the increase to the taxpayers would only be 2%. And I was the only no vote. And I did state at that time that in June, there would be motions on the agenda to place funds into reserve accounts, and here they are, $3.5 million. And it's an amount up to 3.5, but based on the treasurer's and board secretary's report and other financial information that has been provided to the board, these are very achievable amounts, and I still feel that the tax rate, tax levy, could have been reduced without any harm to the programs, or staff, or services that the district provides. And I just had to state it at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mongan, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Dineoff?
Yes, I just have a question on number 21, the commercial insurance rates. Under workman's compensation, I just wanted to know, is this an increase as a result of the district's risk assessment of the previous year? And also, this $657,000, is this still a significant savings from back when the district was self-insured? I just wanted to verify that and compare the amounts.
Okay. On the first question, the insurance rates for workers' comp are based on the actual workers' comp claims over the last three years, so they kind of change. If you have a good year, one good year will drop off, but it's a rolling average, so it's always an average, so that affects the premium. In terms of where we were prior to having an insurance plan that was first dollar versus self-insured, I believe for the prior five years to the insurance that we have now, we were spending at least $1 million a year for workers' comp insurance. So it's been a significant savings since then. We still have the problem of funding unfunded liabilities from 20 prior years, which initially was about $1.8 million that was unfunded. We are presently requesting a new actuarial report to determine what the unfunded liability is now. As of last year's audit, it was about $900,000, so we expect that to be at least half. So we're definitely moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else?
Just have one question that I haven't been able to ask yet. When we went out for refunding on our, refinancing on our bonds, there was a higher return than was anticipated, and I believe the number was $172,000?
No, it was 300 and --
It was $172,000 more than anticipated, I believe that was the case.
The final number was 327.
My question is, what is the use for that money? Does it have to go back to the taxpayers?
It did go back to the taxpayers.
Okay. So even though the rate still went out at 2.8, and that money came in after the published rate, I know it's not even a full point. It just rounded that number down? Okay, thank you.
All right. All righty. We are ready for a vote, Mr. Mara.
One through 20 excluding number 10.
Excluding number 10? No, just for voting for Kelly.
So for items one through nine and 11 through 28, Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
So one through nine and 11 through 28 pass. On item number 10, Ellis Foster?
Epstein.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution 10 passes.
Thank you. Okay. Number 20, non-certificated personnel office, one through five.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
Hotman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hotman. Discussion, questions? Mr. Dineoff? No? All right, Mr. Mara?
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five pass.
Okay, non-certificated personnel operational one and two.
Dunn will make a motion, non-certificated personnel operational, items one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I need a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Ellis Foster, a second. Discussion from anyone? Mr. Mara, roll call.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Non-certificated personnel other?
Hotman will move, non-certificated personnel other, one through 14.
Thank you, Ms. Hotman. I need a second.
Dineoff will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dineoff. Discussion, questions? No? Okay, Mr. Mara, roll call.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 14 pass.
Thank you. Non-certificated personnel operational one and two -- oh, we did that one.
Certificated.
Where are we up to? Non-certificated other? Yeah.
No, you just did.
We did that one. All these pages starting to look alike.
Forty-seven.
One through 47. There we go.
I just need to make one correction on here.
Okay.
Number two? Oops. Number two, letter I, should read MA plus 30. The salary is correct. The 30 is missing.
Thank you, Dr. Hoker. Hold on, I need -- so we need a motion still?
We need a motion still.
We need a motion still. Because one through 47?
Seven.
Seven. Would someone be kind enough to?
Dunn will move certificated personnel, items one through 47.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Hotman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hotman.
Madam President, I need to separate three items.
Okay.
And those items are 29, 30, and number 39.
29, 30, and 39.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Parton, should we do them all separately, or just put those two together?
Mrs. Andriani, I'd like to separate number 31.
31.
Numbers 29, 30, and 31 should be handled individually.
Okay. All right, so --
And then number 39, Mr. Dunn requests as well.
All right, Mr. Dunn, number 39, are you -- for voting purposes?
Number 39 is for voting purposes, purposes correct.
Okay. So how about we do one through 47 excluding 29, 30, and 31?
Yes, and then, Mr. Dunn, you can just abstain on number 39.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Mara, we're good with that?
1 through 47 excluding 29, 30, and 31.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any discussion on 1 through 47 with the exception of 29, 30, 31? Okay, roll call, Mr. Marrow.
Dunn?
Nod.
I'm going to vote.
Mine does.
Vote yes and no vote on number 39.
Thank you.
Oh, mine's back.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
So 1 through 47 minus 29, 30, and 31 pass.
Right. Yes, correct. Thank you. Okay, individually, 29. Discussion?
Want to explain it, Mr. Parton?
Mr. Parton?
Yes, on number 29, further to the question that was posed by Mr. O'Neill, it's a good question, the chart makes things a little bit more complicated. It's supposed to explain things, but I think it maybe does the opposite. That is a chart that could be entitled "Compensation Potential." And the reason that it could be titled that is because the first line, the 177.5 of the salary in the high school stipend are pursuant to the New Jersey Department of Education Fiscal Accountability Regulation, 6A 23A. That is the actual salary that the superintendent is capped at because you are a district with more than 6,500 students but fewer than 10,000. The part below the bolded subsection "Additional Salary Opportunity," those quantitative and qualitative merit goals are just that, they're merit-based, and they have to be by regulation addressed every July at the end of the year. Mr. Sidedino's ongoing salary through the school year will be that 177.5. At the end of the school year, the Board will meet in July, as most Boards of Education do at this point, the salary caps had a variety of intended and unintended consequences. One of them is that Boards get to spend time together in July now. They will evaluate as a jury of nine, of seven members, because we have two conflicted Board members on this issue, whether Mr. Sidedino has hit any or all of those goals and any or all of the percentage of each goal. So that is what that second half of the chart stands for. And the final line that says total annual salary plus additional salary, that is the upward potential for Mr. Sidedino as the salary caps remain in place. The salary caps are supposed to sunset on November 21st, 2016. However, this contract being entered now is subject to those salary caps, so even though it is a five-year deal that's being proposed, the last three years, which include the most merit pay that is permitted, which is 14.9%, it is static. There is no growth in salary compensation potential for the final two years of this contract because by state's regulation, there can't be. Now, not to recognize people out of turn, but if Mr. O'Neill or if any Board members have questions about that, those dynamics, because you raised the question, Tim, does that answer your question?
That answers a lot of questions.
Lovely. Board members, if you have questions about the legal implications of this, obviously, feel free.
And for those of you who say, "We've never seen this before," it's because you've never seen this before. Prior to and including through Dr. Bosco, there was no salary cap on superintendent salary. With Dr. Brennan, that was an interim, so we were not-
He was subject to the cap, but he was within it. And Mr. Sidedino's first contract, he was subject to the cap-
Correct.
-but within it. So it's not a bridge that this district has ever had to cross before until right now.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion.
You have-
I don't think we had one. We did 1 through 47 and excluded the three.
Mr. Dunn moved 1 through 47, seconded by Mrs. Hopman, and then there were separations. And just for clarification for the record, Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Hopman are ineligible to vote on number 29 and number 30, but they were eligible.
30.
Are you eligible on Dr. Hoker?
For Dr. Hoker?
Mr. Dunn is not eligible on Dr. Hoker. Yeah, I guess, Mrs. Hopman, you're, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Mr. Dunn is not eligible on Dr. Hoker. But they are allowed to place these items on the table for board consideration, they're not allowed to participate in the vote.
Okay.
The line chart is direct under you. I have a question. So the Board members present who are eligible to vote.
Yes.
So in my correction, you need five of the six votes to go forward?
Yes, and that's a question that I have scribbled all the way down the margin on this page in anticipation of, under Robert's rules and under your Board policies and under state law. This is a personnel item. You need five yes votes because you need a majority of the full Board. The doctrine of necessity does not apply based upon presence or absence of Board members at any given time. It only applies if you did not have five eligible Board members. So you need on 29, 30, and 31, you do need five yes votes.
Ms. Hopman, you have more questions? You're okay, all right. All right, so any discussion on 29? Any further discussion on 29? None, then, Mr. Marrow, I guess we are ready for a vote.
So even, I'll let the individual members abstain? Chris?
Yes.
Dunn? This is on number 29.
Abstain.
No vote, abstention.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Abstain.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Weber?
My preference certainly would be a three-year contract. I believe that if we had all of the voters here, that the five would be necessary, so I don't see any need to go vote no at this point, I will vote yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution 29 passes. Congratulations, Mr. Sidedino.
Thank you. Moving forward. Number 30 at this point? Any questions, discussion? None. Mr. Marrow?
Dunn?
No vote, abstention.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Abstain.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution 30 passes.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Hoker, resolution. Item number 31, Mr. Marrow, you take your own vote?
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution 31 passes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. And congratulations to the three of you. May we have a progressive year moving forward, or five years in your case. All righty. I need to find my next page, page 47. All right, we're on page 36, non-certificated personnel transportation, 1 and 2.
Hopman will move, non-certificated personnel transportation, 1 and 2.
Thank you, Ms.-
Dineoff will second.
Hopman, and thank you, Mr. Dineoff. Is there any discussion from anyone on transportation? Mr. Marrow, roll call.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution 1 and 2 passes.
Thank you. I heard that, Mr. DePrima. Number 1 through 14 on supplies, equipment, and services.
Dunn will move supplies, equipment, and services, items 1 through 14.
Thank you.
Hopman will second.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Mr. Marrow?
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 14 pass.
Transportation, 1 and 2.
Dineoff will move transportation, items 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Dineoff.
Mongan will second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Certainly, Mr. Weber?
And if they're not, they will be shortly. There's a pending piece of legislation to increase the gasoline tax by 23 cents. Now, we are subject to that tax, though, for the purchase of fuel for the school district?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I don't know what the legislation says, but we buy our, we buy our fuel from the township. So they go out to bid. I don't sure, I don't know the answer to that, I can check that out.
Yeah, if it's possible, what I'm suggesting is that, I know it may be a fait accompli, but that at least we attempt to ask for that if it's not. At least send something on behalf of the Board, because given how much money we spend on fuel in this district, if that is subject to that increase in tax, I think it's something we would try and at least get some relief from.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, that's a very good point. And my understanding is they did vote and pass that this afternoon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Marrow, I don't think there's any other discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Marrow.
Hopman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Mongan?
We have their mics on, we can't vote down here with our mic, you have to turn yours off down there.
Jeff, Jeff, Mr. Dineoff, shut your-
And it happens at every vote.
Mrs. Mongan?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes, I'm very sorry for that.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 and 2 pass.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous, 1 through 10.
Dunn will move miscellaneous items 1 through 10. Dineoff will second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Marrow?
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 10 pass.
Thank you. Board Secretary and Board Business, I need a motion?
Dunn will move Board Secretary and Board Business, item 1.
Hopman will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, Ms. Hopman. Discussion? I don't hear anybody, see anybody, Mr. Marrow, roll call.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution 1 passes.
While we're under Board Business, I just want to mention the evaluation process. We have had a June 30th deadline, and we've been trying to be compliant. I can say at this time that all the Board members have completed their superintendent's evaluation, and I believe all of them are the self, the Board's self-evaluation's already done. So, you know, good for us that we finally made it to a deadline. Now, the second part of that deadline is to meet and approve and have goal-setting, that certainly is not going to happen. I was on the phone with Ms. Mary Gassman from New Jersey School Boards today, but we can take care of that during the summer at a more leisurely pace. But at least we've moved forward with our timelines, so I thank everybody. All righty. Hearing of residents on any item, issue? Please give us your name.
Jen Dantuno, just a question, I apologize, it's my first Board of Ed meeting attending, so I'm not quite sure on the process. Memorial School parking lot, the parents have talked about the unevenness, we've talked over with the principal, and we weren't sure what the process was or if there's any viewing of it possibly getting repaved and evened out.
This is the first, I'm hearing of Memorial School having concern with the parking lot. What I will do is bring that up as a topic for discussion at our next Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation meeting. And prior to that meeting, I'll ask Mr. Frizzita, who is our engineer for maintenance, to provide us some pictures of the facility and the parking lot, just take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Teresa Burns from Memorial School. I just wanted to remind you that I brought up the parking lot at a superintendent forum that you had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, anyone? New business? Summer business?
Okay, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but do we have in our policy manual a current class size policy?
Yes, we do.
And are you, can you tell me off the top of the head what it is? Ballpark?
What base?
Well, no, based, when I started doing some independent research, when this question came up about the availability of maybe getting other resources to fund the resource teachers that were considered being removed from GRSAM, I was looking for something to guide me and looking at the valuation of the May enrollment, which is the last one that I had. And I found a policy that comes out of Princeton, and I think it's, I think it's an idea one, and I'm just asking that the Policy Committee look at it compared to what we're doing. It gives a superintendent flexibility, it gives you, obviously, such as a bump up in enrollment at Warhee School, it gives you some latitude in doing those things. So I would just pass it on, I have a dozen copies or so. Nancy, can you pass it back, please? And just ask that be considered to be reviewed at the Policy Committee.
All of us?
Yeah, there's a copy for each.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Okay.
New business?
Yeah, based upon a few of the items, this one you bring up and a few other items, you know, I would not be opposed to having a policy meeting in July. you know, I would not be opposed to having a policy meeting in July, if we can get that put together, I'll have Mr. Mara reach out to Mr. Singh to find some dates that work out.
Okay.
I have new business, Mrs. Andreani.
Okay, Ms. Mangan.
Dear members of the public, it is with very mixed emotion that I am announcing tonight that due to recent unexpected personal family events, that will prevent me from completing the final five months of my term, to do the right thing by this district and by the board, to allow time for the board to advertise, interview, and appoint an interim member, so that the full nine-member complement of the board is in place for the next action meetings in August, I will be providing my letter of resignation to the Board President to be effective August 1, 2016. Old Bridge has been my home since 1986, the past 30 years have flown by in a heartbeat, and I am so proud to have been a member of this community, as a parent, as a PTA member, as a district employee, and finally, as an elected member of this board. I want to thank everyone that has supported me, respected me, called me after many meetings, and thanked me for providing sometime a not welcome voice, but I've always done my due diligence and voted my conscience, and I just want to end by saying it has been a privilege and an honor to serve you and this community, thank you.
Ms. Mangan, that was very eloquent, thank you. Okay. Caught me, caught us all by surprise, okay, Mr. Sedidino.
No particular order in new business or old business, but first of all, thank you, Ms. Mangan, for your years of service as an employee, a parent, and as a board member. Under new business, in working with the Old Bridge Township Multicultural Committee, and the, under the direction of the office of the mayor, and with New Jersey, I'm sorry, with Old Bridge Township Public Schools, we have put together a, kind of a shared service project, it'll be a first of its kind for Old Bridge Township, it'll be an Old Bridge Cultural and Community Festival, it will take place Saturday and Sunday, October 15th and 16th, at Old Bridge High School's property, this will be a celebration of everything that's great about Old Bridge, its diversity, we're inviting vendors, craft people, nonprofits to come to share their information, share their heritage, share their culture about the foods, the crafts, the history of each community member, kind of looking at it like an Epcot for two days, where you'll be able to take a trip through different vending areas, and take part in Indian food, Italian food, Asian food, Portuguese food, whatever it is in the crafts, and at the end of it, or the main point of it, is so that our students and our people of our community get an understanding about the diversity of cultural understanding, because a lot of times that we have conflicts between people, and it's out of not knowing, not knowing the history of people, not knowing enough about their culture, so increase our cultural sensitivity, and celebrate everything that's good in Old Bridge, and hopefully it'll be a great time to get together and share some good food and good conversations, and our students will be participating through their clubs and activities, their dances and everything else, so we're looking forward to this, hopefully this will be a new tradition in Old Bridge, and the good thing about it is that all of the proceeds from the event will go directly into Old Bridge Township Public Schools to support our student activities, or student programs, I shouldn't say student activities, more student programs. Nonprofits will not pay to participate, any vendors for craft and retail will be $50 for the two days, businesses will be $200, and food trucks or various food vendors will be $300, and again, all of the proceeds will go right back into our schools, so it's a great opportunity to celebrate everything that's good about Old Bridge, and to bring some resources into our, to support our student programs. I want to thank the township, the mayor's office, and the Old Bridge Township Multicultural Committee for working with me on this project. Under older business, the, we have had the conversation over the past few months with the board about looking at a strategic planning process, whether through New Jersey School Boards or EIRC, looking at the list of references that are there for both, and speaking to colleagues who have used one or both, and speaking to our own council, who made recommendation on the process, making the administrative decision to go with the ERC proposal with Dr. Charles Ivory, I've spoken to Dr. Ivory, and he's sharpened his pencil and reduced his, I guess his cost of options for us, not to exceed $9,800, and again, that's a not to exceed $9,800 option, and looking at this, this will provide us with a terrific feedback from the board and administration, getting us engaged on what the school district needs, but the bigger part is the community engagement piece, we'll have community nights, where community members from all across different walks of life in Old Bridge come together and talk about our schools, what they need from our schools, what our schools mean to them, it'll include as an option a community web-based survey, and strategic planning support, and all of this to help us drive a five-year plan for the district's strategic plan that we haven't had in place in recent years. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sedidino, thank you. All right, at this time, it's time to get ready to say goodbye for the summer, Mr. Dunn, we start with you, and we'll work our way this way.
Sure, good evening, first and foremost, I want to congratulate David Sedidino, Dr. Hoker, and Joe Mara for having their contract renewed, obviously I was conflicted, and I could not vote on their renewal, except for Mr. Mara, I just want to just say some kind words about David, and also Kathy, because it's needed, they have been a very instrumental part, or a very integral part of our success in the school district over the last three years, and I'm proud of this Board of Education, who has recognized their value and worth to our district, we have come so far, in such a small time period, that we need to give them the credit that they deserve, and tonight, I want to thank my fellow board members for ratifying their contracts, and I believe it's in the best interest of the school district to have them as our lead administrators. Secondly, I had the distinct pleasure of attending numerous graduations this past month, and as always, I was inspired, and I was in awe of our students, our graduates, and our faculty for having given so much to these wonderful students, who are going to be leaders in our world going forward, the high school graduation was magnificent as usual, the graduations for the middle schools at Brookdale was fantastic, and also I had the opportunity to spend some time at the Southwood graduation with Principal Foley, and also spend time at Cooper Elementary School with Principal Gramata, and celebrated their accomplishments for their fifth graders. Thirdly, this Board of Education has always put the onus on education, we've always been a leading advocate for our children and their educational programs, and one thing I have to say is that I'm very proud that this Board has always given a lot to the special needs children of this district, I know we're very sensitive to our program, the special needs program, and tonight, I think it was reaffirmed and recognized by the administration that the resource teachers are required, and they're a huge benefit for our children, and at no time should the public ever think that this Board of Education is trying to cut programs or hurt any individual school, the administration has a monumental task to coordinate the resources that are necessary for the fulfillment of our goals, and sometimes they need to make the right decisions, and make sure that they put the pieces in the right place, and I'm very proud that the administration decided, based upon need and also availability, to ensure that the resource teachers maintained in the schools, it's a very important piece of our program, and all our kids have benefited from their interaction. Fourthly, I just want to sincerely thank Nancy Mangan for her years of service, I've known Nancy quite well since 2010, when I first became a board member during the draconian cuts, when Governor Christie came into office, I relied on Nancy to guide me and to give me some insight when she was the school business administrator, and I always have respected Nancy, I have always enjoyed her companionship, her knowledge, and her insight, and I'm sad to see her go, I have not always agreed with Nancy, however, she brought a perspective to the board which was necessary and very refreshing, so Nancy, tonight I want to thank you for your many, many years of service, I'm a better person for knowing you, and for you giving me the knowledge to be a adequate and good board member, so thank you again, Nancy.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dinev?
Yes, thank you, I first want to start by congratulating Mr. Sedidino, Dr. Hoker, and Mr. Mara for their contracts, if you look back and see what this district accomplished the past three years, we can only imagine what Mr. Sedidino and his leadership team can accomplish in five more, so I was happy to support the contract, also, I just wanted, I missed it earlier, but I wanted to thank Ms. Schneider for her service to the district as our science supervisor, and for all her work implementing the next generation's science standards, her passion and love for curriculum and science were very admirable, and I thank her for that. Next, I'd also like to thank Ms. Mangan as well for her service to the district, I only had six months to work with her, but it was a true privilege, I thank her for her guidance, I thank her for answering all my financial questions throughout these months, and she'll definitely be dearly missed up here. Lastly, I want to congratulate again all the Old Bridge High School graduates, I had the privilege of participating in the ceremony, I was on the other side as a student three years ago, and I remember, I recall what a privilege it is to sit up here every day. I also just want to wish everyone, I hope everyone has a great summer, healthy and happy summer, and also a restful one, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dinev, Ms. Hartman?
Yes, I first would like to congratulate Mrs. Sedidino, Dr. Hoker, and Mr. Mara for having your contracts renewed, unfortunately, I wasn't able to vote for Mrs. Sedidino or Dr. Hoker, had I been able to, I certainly would have voted to put them back in, I've been on this board for over 15 years, and I've been through many superintendents, assistant superintendents, and, you know, I have to say that our school district has certainly gone above and beyond, okay, in all the years that I've been on the board, and also my children going through the school district, and being in Old Bridge for the amount of years that I've been here, and I just want to thank the board members for voting, okay, and doing the right thing in putting them back in the place, okay, there's an old saying, you know what you got, you don't know what you're going to get, all right, when you have something that's not broken, don't try to fix it, and I'm very glad that they realized this, and did the voting that they needed to do, so that our administration can continue doing a successful job. Also, I'm very glad that Dr. Sed, Mr. Sedidino announced that we will have the resource teachers in the schools, as they need to be there, the schools were built in the developments, so that when people moved into the development, that is where their children would go to school, and not have to be transported somewhere else, and I've said this all along, okay, it is an important factor when you are looking to buy a home, besides, you know, how good the school district is, and I know that we've discussed this as far as the resource teachers were concerned, and I'm very glad that Mrs. Sedidino did announce that there will be the resource teachers in, so you don't need to worry about that. Also, I want to congratulate the children, I was so taken back tonight to see all of these youngsters here, that came and donated their hair, okay, for this program, it was such a wonderful thing to see, that they actually got involved with that, to do that, all right, to give their hair for the purpose of somebody else needing it, all right, and for somebody that young to want to do that, was certainly, it took me back, I was amazed at it, and, you know, I have to thank the teachers and the people that donated also, along with Madison and Lex, who I happen to know the owner very well, and it's a place I go to get my hair cut, and, you know, those women came over and took the time to work with these children, to get their hair cut, okay, on their day off, it's a wonderful place to be, I am so glad that they donated their time to do that, you know, it's just something that you're giving back to Old Bridge, these people are doing this, and I can't thank them enough for that. Also, the graduation, I had the opportunity of going to the middle school graduations, and the high school graduation, unfortunately, I couldn't go to any of the elementary moving up, it's probably the first year I haven't been able to go because I had to work, but, you know, I want to congratulate them for moving up, going now into sixth grade, and then the eighth grade graduation, the ceremony was, it was phenomenal, the kids coming up and getting their diplomas, and Mr. Dunn and Mr. De Prima also getting up and giving their speeches, which were very, very well done, and I just want to say that, you know, I really was very glad to be able to participate in that, and also the high school graduation, to see the amount that we had graduating this year, was over 700, it was unbelievable, okay, it just shows you that the staff that we have, the administration, everybody that is included in educating these children, from administration all the way, all the way that you can go, the teachers, the parays, transportation, maintenance, anybody, I hope I did not leave anybody out, because anybody who was employed in the Old Bridge School District in some way participated in helping these children get to where they are today, along with their parents and their grandparents, so that they can go on, and someday may very well be sitting where we are today, here's a good example, Jeff, okay, so, you know, I was just in awe to be able to be there and be a part of it, also, the Relay for Life, I was at the Relay for Life for a while, I've gone to them the last four years that they've had it, and I know Mr. Redman was here tonight, and thank God, he's a survivor, and it was just great to see these people who survived from this disease, to be able to walk Lombardi Field, okay, it certainly, it makes you very proud to be able to know that we have this program that goes on every year, to help these people as much as we can, so I just want to thank Mr. Redman, along with Karen Redman, who was also very, very involved in that program, to help these people, so that going down the line, maybe someday we can see a lot more of the survivors walking Lombardi Field. Other than that, I just want to say that I wish everybody a happy and safe summer, I look forward to seeing everybody again back in September, and I thank all of you, every employee in this school district for the job that you do, because it is so well done, okay, to be a national school of character, that's telling you something, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman, Mr. De Prima?
Thank you, you know, I love this job, and I love meetings like this, where everybody gets recognized, and all the children smiling, and I'll tell you, cutting their hair, I don't know if I could do that, so you guys did a great job, Dave, Kathy, Joe, the past three years have been a whirlwind of goodness for this school district, we owe a lot to you three for doing this, if the past three years are any indication of where we are, I can't wait to see the next five years. You know, we get to sit up here, but this, to coin, I don't know, I didn't coin the phrase, but it takes a village, this is a wonderful community when it comes to our schools, like I said, we get to sit up here, but everybody that has a stake in this community is a part of the greatness that we're attaining, from the board, administrators, teachers, staff, families, and especially the students, let's just keep going till, I guess we get to number one, you can never stop improving, as some of my colleagues have alluded to, it's been a tremendous month, graduations and everything, I had the honor of speaking at the Saul graduation, and it's just so great to be up there and see all the smiling faces, and the proudness, and it's really a great opportunity. Nancy, I think you surprised us all tonight, but as everybody else has alluded to, thank you for your years of service, it's been a pleasure, and good luck to you in your future endeavors, I think that's really pretty much it, everybody have a great, happy, healthy, and safe summer, and before you know it, we'll be back here, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster?
Okay, I'm next, thanks, thanks, I'll try to keep it short, but I got, my list kind of got longer as the evening progressed, well, thanks, I'm glad the administrative team is continuing on, it's been a great experience, again, I know we'll continue to do some great things, on the Relay, you know, which is pretty personal to me, and it's a great event, I wanted to make sure to recognize Mr. Singh, because he and his company donated the dunk tank, so that meant all of our proceeds went to the cause, and we also did have a few other dunkies who indulged, and so Dr. Cascone was there, we had from the high school, Mr. Amidola, Ms. Freel, we had Mr. Kelly and Mr. Bouchur, so great sports that came out and were allowed to be dunked, so it was a great, a great thing, and this last month, yeah, has been a whirlwind of fantastic activities, from scholarship nights and things, and it hit me, there's this theme of great enthusiasm from everybody, from the kids, from the staff, and so there's two events that I was able to attend, one, Dr. Cascone had a luncheon for kids at college, which is a phenomenal program that we have for our fourth graders who go out and visit colleges, and the guidance counselors that were there were just a joy and thrilled, even though it was the end of the year, when they were probably exhausted, had such enthusiasm, and there were kids who came back who were in high school, who were still talking about the program, but also at that event were the counselors from Carpenter, who were talking about this event that they had, and Mr. McKee was there, just such enthusiasm, they were thrilled beyond belief, and then the other one that just hit home was a graduation, at the high school, a graduation, talked to Mr. Sasso, and he was talking the last day of school, when you would think most seniors, the first, what they would want to do is get out of that building, he said they did not want to leave, so I said, well, that's pretty much a testament to the experience, so, there's that one, so it was just, it's just a wonderful feeling, so, Mr. and Mrs. Gerard, I just want to share a personal story, and I know it's very personal about when your child starts school, and how that is, so I can tell you, my daughter's birthday is October 22nd, so I know exactly what you're going through, I can share, and again, it's very personal for each family, I can tell you, she's a rising senior, which is a very hard thing for me to say right now, that she's actually going into her senior year, she was always the oldest, and I can say, she never felt weird about that, the only thing now is, all her friends are hitting her up for a ride, because she's the first one. first person who can drive. So, hopefully, you can, you know, your child start and, and have a wonderful experience. So, I know it doesn't necessarily make it any better, but I can share that with you. Again, the graduations were phenomenal. I think I cried at every one, even though I didn't have a child in it. Memorial had theirs, they hit the kids' sign, it was, I was crying at that. So, just be able to participate in those kind of things is just phenomenal. So, that was just great. And Nancy, I, you know, now you'll get me started, but it's been a privilege to sit here. Okay? So, everyone have a good summer.
Thank you for all the kind words. I just want to say that the greatest part for me, as far as the meetings, attending the meetings, the recognition part, and attending the award ceremonies, because I know that this, since I moved to Olbridge, and my kids are testament to the fact that it is a great school district, you can get a great education here and go on to do good things. And it's proven when we have the Wall of Fame ceremonies, and we honor those alumni that have gone on to such great heights. And here we have a recent graduate that even decided to run for the board and made it. I mean, you know, is going on to a very, you know, big career in maybe the law. So, I just want to say I've enjoyed every minute, and I love this town, I love this district, and thank you all again, sincerely, from the bottom of my heart.
Nancy has been a, we've attended church together, we've, go back a long time. She's been a tremendous asset to the, both to the administration, when she was in the administration, and as a board member. And she's always had in the forefront the best interests of the taxpayers of Olbridge. It's been one of her, I think, one of her very solid, positive things that all of us should aspire to. She's been a great board member, and I know she's going to enjoy her grandchildren and her time away from this, and I wish her Godspeed and the best of everything.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. All righty. When people give speeches, many times they find someone famous to quote, and they include that in their speech. I'm still trying to get over the high school graduation, when the salutatorian quoted Slim Shady, and the valedictorian quoted Drake. So, I know that I'm way on the waning side of what's popular. But with that said, there are many times that Mr. Cedidino, and it may not be a quote, but I, I quote him at large many times, when I, when he says, "What if it was my child?" And I believe that that's one of his mantras, that many decisions for the school district are based upon, "What if it was my child?" So, with that, I want to say that your children, over nine thousand of them, are in very capable hands. Their education is quality, their transportation is safety above all else, and we may vent, and we may have things that bother us, but in the big picture, this is a wonderful place to raise children, and your children are in good hands. I want to thank Mr. Cedidino, Dr. Hoker, Mr. Mara. Individually, they are quality staff people. Together as a team, they're phenomenal. Dr. Bosco was here, was very traditional. Dr. Brennan was here. We were very innovative. This administrative team is very progressive, and I think that bigger and better things are, are coming our way. Whether it's a district of character, whether it's state championships, whether it's wonderful string ensemble music, we do good things here. Ms. Mongan, you caught me by surprise. I know that, you know, there were things that you were, you were thinking about in, in terms of timeliness and your future. And you mentioned something before, and I want to just reference that, because you have a strong voice. And there are many times you have been the minority voice, but it's always been a strong voice, and one that was true to your, true to what you felt needed to be said at the time. So, I appreciate you for all of the hard work and all of your efforts on behalf of the school district for many years as an employee, and then for the last few years as a board member. So, thank you very, very much, and I'm very sorry to see you go. Decisions are made that are hard decisions, and I, and I understand that, but you will be missed. With that said, I guess it's time to start singing "Schools Out" for summer.
Can I think one more thing?
Oh, if you have to.
Just be brief. I'd just be remiss. This year again, I attended the project graduation. I want to thank every parent, father, mother, staff member, our transportation department is there until four o'clock in the morning getting kids home. Just, it's, it's a great event. It keeps the kids safe. This year, took it over the top. As soon as you walked in the front door, there was a bull riding going on. Everything for the students was there that they could want in a few hours to celebrate together before they head off their college careers. And the most important thing, as we always say, just to keep them safe, in a one error we can watch over them one last time. It was a great event, and it gets better every year, so thank you for everyone who made it possible, and thank you again.
We need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Weber has now made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Dunn will second. Any discussion? Do we want to go into closed session?
No, we don't.
So, Ellis-Foster?
Yes, have a good summer.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dainoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, passes.